Islam, Islam, Islam. We are here, we are here, we are here for thirty minutes more or less. Welcome truth seekers of our illustrious Moorish American community and those awakening to the true essence of your birthright nationality and history to our Sabbath study sessions. All right? Let's embark on a profound journey into the unspoken legacy of harems and their intricate role in shaping societal hierarchies and familial bonds. This exploration is not for the faint of heart, but for those among us yearning to uncover the depths of our historical and cultural identities. Join us as we peel back the layers of history examining the dual edges of power and neglect inherent in the institution of harems. Let's dive into understanding with open minds and hearts how these practices have influenced male societal positions and conversely, the lives of the mothers and children often left in the shadows. This is from a mother's perspective during this Women's History Month 2024, being observed at the time of recording. But before we get into all of that, first updates and questions. The Power of a Moor Campaign. Mercy charities will be posting our bi-monthly board meeting for public scrutiny. And so you all can see what we're up to and how we're operating. This meeting will be issuing the call for new board members and committee members for upcoming projects. So please be sure to keep an eye out for that one and check it out when it drops. Sacrifice Week 2024. Khalifa Media is giving away free copies of the Divine National Constitution when you donate to receive the Sisters Auxiliary Guidebook and/or either of the Unice pens available exclusively from KhalifaMedia.com. These copies of the Constitution are eight and a half by eleven inches, printed on durable cardstock suitable for framing with two different photo options. As always, twenty percent of all proceeds collected at KhalifaMedia.com are donated to Mercy Charities, a Moorish-run charity. Be sure to visit KhalifaMedia.com for details. Okay, to the one, the singular question we received this week. So this week's question is also this week's topic. Building off last week's discussion of how it matters more who your mother is than who your father is, we received the following question and my response. So the question was, "Peace and love, sis. I'm always trying to understand the reason behind the harems. One conclusion I came up with was to help them, the harem dwellers, to spiritually incline? Not sure. Any books on this matter would be greatly appreciated, Islam." Okay, and my response was, "Motherhood tells me Moorish men, or men in power in general, today aren't much different than the ones of yesteryear. They were more likely interested in getting laid than saving souls. They want wives and children without having to be husbands and fathers. Harems were full of single quote-unquote married mothers and fatherless children. But as long as the guy gets his social credit from the other guys, it's all good." This goes for all harems, alright? And while I was satisfied with my response, I didn't feel it went deep enough. And I was not about to put all of that into a response on YouTube. I thought, here we go, this is best. Here's the question I've been waiting to respond to for this study session. So Islam gratitude to you sis for asking your question. Anyone else have a question? Please be sure to leave it in the comments or you can email to Islam@KhalifaMedia.com or info@KhalifaMedia.com. But anyway, like I said, I didn't feel like my response went deep enough. But before we dive into the depths of our discourse, as usual, let's define some key terms that will be used throughout this presentation to build a common understanding. Today I will be referring to the New Dictionary of the English Language, 1926 edition, and the Women's Encyclopedia of Myths and Secrets published in 1983. Alright, the first definition, primitive from the New Dictionary, 1926 edition. Primitive adjective pertaining to the beginning, original, not derivative, old-fashioned. Noun, a word in its simplest form and not derived from another. Next definition is motherhood from the Women's Encyclopedia of Myths and Secrets. This definition was thirteen pages long, so I just narrowed it down to the following selections. So the very first definition, or the first passage in this very thirteen-page-long definition, motherhood. During the early evolution of the human race, motherhood was the only recognized bond of relationship. Like any mammalian family, the primitive human family consisted of mother and offspring. And then it goes on to quote a selection, "The animal family is the product of the maternal instincts and those alone. The mother is the sole center of the, and the bond of it. The male has no share in forming the animal family. He is not an essential member of it. He may join the maternal group, but commonly does not do so. While he attaches himself to the animal family, his association with it is loose and precarious. Where the female can derive no benefit from association with the male, no association takes place. Where male cooperation is useful, the male seeks out or follows the female. And it is the latter who determines the segregation of the group and selects its abode." Or it's the female who decides who's in this family and where this family lives, okay? Where they reside, alright? It goes on to say, "The root of civilization was the kinship bond that kept groups together to evolve mutual cooperation. The bond was maternal because no paternal relationships were perceived or even guessed by such early groups with their shifting temporary sexual attachments." Again, that's why I started with primitive, okay? "The connection between sexuality and childbearing was unknown to primitive man." And that's why I included that, okay? Uh, the next selection from motherhood from the same dictionary. "As may be found still in many groups of people, motherhood alone was the foundation of clan loyalties. In Assam, the social group, the social unit of tribes was maharis or motherhoods. The melee family was sa mande, motherhood. Among gharos and khasis, mothers headed the family groups and bequeathed all property in the female line. Men could inherit nothing. Nearly everywhere, kinship bonds also passed only through the female line, as in the ancient system deliberately reversed by the Bible's quote-unquote begat, which recognized only male ancestors. Sari Indian tribes called themselves kunkak, or womanhood, or motherhood. The earliest religious works of art are figures of the solitary great goddess, the Paleolithic image of mother, before there was any father either on earth or in heaven. The idea of fatherhood was alien to the religious or social thinking of the earliest civilizations." So that leads into our next definition. Oh, no, no, no. Before I go there, um, we're gonna look at fatherhood. That's the next definition, right? But uh, before we go there, I thought I'd, you know, share this interesting passage I found in another section of the thirteen-page definition of motherhood in the Women's Encyclopedia of Myths and Secrets, okay? By Barbara G. Walker. It's a great book. Okay, so it says, "Egyptian men were awed by maternal behavior patterns, wondering why women did what they did to maintain the race. Maxims written about fifteen hundred B.C. said, quote, 'Thou shalt never forget thy mother and what she has done for thee, for she carried thee long beneath her heart as a heavy burden during pregnancy, and after thy months were accomplished, she bore thee. Three long years she carried thee upon her shoulders and gave thee her breast to thy mouth. And as thy size increased, her heart never once allowed her to say, "Why should I do this?" Yeah, that's deep, okay? Egyptian scriptures emphasize the honor due to quote thy mother who bore thee with much suffering. She placed thee in the chamber of instruction that thou mightest acquire instruction in books. She was unremitting in her care for thee and had loaves and beer for thee in her house. When thou art grown, cast thy eyes upon her that gave thee birth and provided all good things for thee, thy mother. Let her never reproach thee." Alright, um, and it goes on and gone on, but I'm gonna stop right there. For the next definition. Fatherhood, which is also from the Women's Encyclopedia, continues on. Okay, fatherhood, okay? It says, "Myths show that once men understood they could beget children, they wanted many children because that was the best and easiest way to become a god. Ancestral mothers had been deified by their descendants for countless generations. Patriarchs craved similar notions of descendants, for a tribal ancestor achieved great glory in the afterworld. Men transferred their allegiance from the great mother, the original deified ancestoress, to gods like Yahweh on the basis of his promises, quote, 'I will make of thee a great nation, and I will bless thee, and I will make thy name great, and I will make thee exceedingly fruitful,' right? And I will make nations of thee.'" Who has to do all this work, alright? It's like, yeah, you plant your seeds and who gonna, who gonna be taking care of that harvest, right? We're gonna get into that. Again, "I will make thee exceedingly fruitful, and I will make nations of thee, and kings shall come out of thee." Genesis 12:17, okay? It goes on to say, "Persians said, 'A man who died childless couldn't enter paradise at all. Prayers and sacrifices of descendants were essential to blessedness for the paternal soul. Hindus deified a son as one whose incantations and offerings kept a father's spirit from wandering homeless and hungry in the waste spaces of eternity.'" Wow. What is that? The Brahman Dharma Purana said, "No rituals are performed for the man who has no descendants," you know, because your daughters just don't count. It goes on, "Souls are useful to give, oh, sons are useful to give oblations to the ancestors, okay? The Chinese thought if a man had no son, he cut the continuous line of paternal ancestor worship and lost his chance of becoming immortal." Wow, how selfish. "Fatherhood was largely a ceremonial relationship with little recognition that men might take an active part in raising their own children." Again, they want wives and children, but they don't want to be husbands and fathers. This is not saying all men, because if there are exceptions, there is no rule. But you know, when there are consistencies, yeah, let's just roll with that. Anyway, it goes on to say, um, after fatherhood is a largely ceremonial relationship, and um, you have to remember this dictionary is coming from a Eurocentric perspective, okay? We need to get our own stuff and then we can refer to our own stuff. But until then, there's this. It goes on to say, um, "The classical Latin term pater familias, now connoting a father of a family and a household ruler, didn't convey anything like that to the Romans who invented the terms," and it goes on to in detail, okay? It goes on, "Men or gods began to claim physical fatherhood not so much by the act of begetting as by a different ceremony ceremonial act designed to imitate the motherly act of birth-giving." See, birth-giving male. So you know I had to look that one up, right? And to finish out the passage, "In the earliest time, the imitation was quite literal, like the rite of kuvaade, kuvaad, practiced by primitives to establish paternal rights to a child." Because you know, you can prove it. So you just gotta say his mind and just enforce that mess. "While the mother gave birth, the father took to his bed moaning and groaning and pretending to bring forth the child. Kuvaad was an imitation ritual for priests of Aphrodite of Radni at Amathus, where a man dressed in, oh my God, where a man dressed in female clothing went through a pantomime of childbirth to earn the priestly title of father. So in order to get in charge, you gotta, you know, show you can act like a mother in order to be, you know, claim the title of father." Anyway, um, so yeah, looking at, that's, that's what I took from fatherhood, which is, it wasn't thirteen pages, but it was a long definition as well. But um, going to birth-giving male, okay, from the same dictionary. Birth-giving male, okay? "Since birth-giving was the only true mark of divinity and primitive belief, the first gods to claim any sort of supremacy had to claim also the ability to give birth. In fact, usurpation of the feminine power of birth-giving seems to have been the distinguishing mark of the earliest gods. Lacking vaginas, many gods gave birth from their mouths. Priests of Ra claimed their god gave birth to the first couple from his mouth. Satapatha Brahmana said that the god, said the god Prajapati learned to give birth to creatures from his mouth. But before he could manage it, he had to make sacrifices to an older, higher power, the goddess Svaha, Lady of Sacrifices. According to the Padma Purana, a god named Sukra, seed, was born, was born, this is like desperate, this is coming off real desperate. According to the Padma Purana, a god named Sukra, or seed, was born from Shiva's penis after living in Shiva's belly for a hundred years. However, no disrespect to anybody's culture, this is laughing at guys, not your culture. However, this was not a proper maternal-type birth. Sukra existed beforehand, and Shiva had to make himself pregnant by swallowing him." Okay, I'm just gonna keep going. It says, "The Rig Veda spoke," see, this is what you do when you try to defy nature, right? It just gets like, you gotta be joking, you are out of your mind. Anyway, "The Rig Veda spoke of a male creator who gave birth to the mother of creation, then impregnated her, so she brought forth the rest of the universe. Brahmins tried to claim the mother of all gods was born from Brahma's body, even though she was the mother of Brahma too." Wow. Brah, let me read that again, okay? Brahmas tried to claim the mother of all, the mother of all gods, the mother of all gods was born from Brahma's body. The mother of all gods was born from Brahma's body, even though she was the mother of Brahma too. Brahma was known as Lotusborn, meaning he sprang from the primal Yoni, the goddess Padma or Lotus. His first lotus throne was located in her lap." No symbolism there. "The Rig Veda also called her vah, the great womb, the queen, the first, the greatest of all deities. She said, 'I begot all fathers on high. I dwell in the waters, the deep, and thence extend through all creatures and touch the heavens with my crown. Like unto the wind I blow, encompassing all creatures above the heavens and above the earth.'" Alright? It goes on, let me see how much, okay, good. Just to finishing up the birth-giving males, birth-giving male, right? "Before begetting was understood, archaic mythmakers tried all sorts of ideas for making a male body produce offspring. A Chinese ancestor god, Kun, suffered a crude Caesarian section. He was slain and cut open so Yu, founder of the Xia dynasty, could emerge from his stomach. Norsemen said a first male and female couple were born, oh my God. Norsemen said a first male and female couple were born from the sweaty armpit of the giant Mire, who imitated Mother Earth in his flesh becoming the soil. Hmm, his blood the sea and his bones the mountain. Mire's skull became the dome of the heavens, supported at four corners by the four dwarfs, Austri, Vestri, Nordri, and Sudri, east, west, north, and south, northern copies of the sons of Horus. It says, 'Similar cardinal direction, gods became identified with the four angels of the apocalypse and four evangelists, whose totems were the same.'" Islam, it goes on, giving another example of how desperately males uh, want to control that which was ordained by Allah to be controlled by the females, the women. It says, "The god," and it's the last one for birth-giving males, "the god Loki gave birth to Odin's horse." Oh wow. "After making himself pregnant by eating a woman's heart. The usual mythic symbol of a woman's heart from Egypt to Northern Europe was an apple. Thus it might be assumed that in some prototypical versions of the Eden story, Adam ate the apple before, not after he gave birth to Eve." Adam's birth-giving was a syncretic product of the numerous local notions of the male mother. Check that out, male mother. A Hittite god, Korrombi, managed to become pregnant by eating his rival's penis. I'm just gonna stop, alright? Move on to the next definition, alright? Because it's getting crazy. And it, it went on. I remember it just kept getting wilder and wilder. So again, that's in um, the Women's Encyclopedia of Myths and Secrets. And y'all can let me know if you want me to come back and, and read the whole, the full passages. Islam. And the last definition is harem. From the New Definition, or the New Dictionary, 1926 edition, harem, alright? It says, "The apartments of the women and children in a Mohammedan house, and the wives and concubines of a Mohammedan, also harim and harem," which was funny, right? Because um, AI, when I first looked it up, AI returned the definition of harem was a traditionally polygamous household of wives, concubines, and sometimes eunuchs, centered around one male figure historically aimed at consolidating power, wealth, and legacy. And I found it interesting how most of the internet searches for the definition of harem returned, returned results, referencing Mohammedans as well, right? However, but I just was like, nah, I'm pretty sure, you know, more than just Moors. They might have kicked it off, but they weren't the only ones who like, had collections of women, stables of women, right? Um, however, but, so I went in deeper by including the names of the various empires that I remember doing this, right? Engaging in this practice throughout history. And one can see this was not unique to the Mohammedans. All the known empires of history had their roots in the harems of these so-called powerful men. Obviously, the power wasn't with him. "Harems, a term often shrouded in mystery and misconception, have played a pivotal role in elevating male social positions within many societies. These exclusive spaces reserved for the women linked to a single man symbolize power and privilege. Yet beneath the surface of these seemingly opulent lives lies a complex narrative of neglecting mothers and their children. These women, often seen as mere vessels of procreation and pleasure, embody the silent strength and resilience of motherhood against the backdrop of societal neglect." "In the grandeur of harems, the narrative of the mothers and their children often remain untold. Their stories, filled with both love and loss, highlight the intricate web of emotional and social neglect faced by those who bear and raise the next generation. These mothers, despite their crucial role in sustaining the lineage and legacy of their communities, often found themselves marginalized, their contributions undervalued in the historical narrative." So to expand on it, I'm gonna read an excerpt from the definition of mother, of fatherhood, again, from the Women's Encyclopedia that expands on this point. It says, "One reason for the restrictive authoritarian atmosphere of patriarchous society seems to have been that men didn't readily see their children as separate persons, but viewed them as extensions of the father's own ego, therefore requiring strict discipline to make them conform to the pattern." Zimmer, I guess that's a, uh, author who was cited earlier in the passage. Zimmer says, "In the language of symbols, son means double or alter ego or living copy of the father," that's the definition of son, right? "The father's essence in another individualization. Thus, the father's interest in children was more selfish than the mothers. Harriet Stanton Blanch wrote, 'Men talk of the sacredness of motherhood, but judging from their acts, it is the last thing that is held sacred. The sense of obligation to offspring men possess but feebly. There has not been developed by animal evolution an instinct of paternity. They are not disinherited fathers, they are simply unevolved parents. Those who could improve humanity have been hindered by those who prefer to improve steam engines. The sex with which has been laboriously evolved by nature for the arduous work of race-building is handicapped. Western patriarchy developed a culture of acquisitiveness, yup, aggression and hierarchy for the very reason that its underlying philosophy was masculine selfish, according to Newman. This situation of the patriarchy, known to us particularly from its Western development, is characterized by a recession in feminine psychology and its dominance. Now feminine existence is almost entirely determined by the masculine world of consciousness and its values." Okay? "The desire to create and control legacy has driven many men to establish harems, viewing them as a means to assert their dominance and ensure their lineage. This pursuit, however, often overshadows the profound ability of women to create life, turning it into a power struggle that seems to usurp the very essence of creation. It's a narrative that not only shapes the dynamics within harems, but also influences societal perceptions of gender roles and parenthood. As Moorish Americans and seekers of our true heritage, it's imperative that we embrace the complex truths of our ancestry, specifically its matrilineal roots. The history of harems with its myriad of lessons offers us a mirror to reflect on our societal structures, gender roles, and the values we place on motherhood and fatherhood. By understanding our past, we can chart a course for a future that honors all members of our community, recognizing their worth and contributions beyond traditional roles and narratives." In conclusion, gratitude to the Moor for her questions about harems that led to the exploration of what happens when you take a good thing too far. Polygony, which is sanctioned under Islam, limits men to four wives for a reason. Islamism, as laid out by noble prophet Jirali, limits men to as many women as a man can afford. And considering this is a prophet saying this, this probably had more to do with, you know, when he said, "Four" had more to do with quality over quantity, alright? A man with four wives can easily portion his time between four women and their children, right? What kind of relationship do you think Solomon built with his seven hundred wives, three hundred concubines, and innumerable children they produced? The only thing he could have imparted to most of them was their connection to his name, while neither could tell a stranger what the others' favorite..." while neither could tell a stranger what the other's favorite color was. But as long as Solomon was straight, alright? So yeah, thank you again for joining us in this exploration. Together in the spirit of knowledge and understanding, we forge a future that respects and celebrates our rich heritage and the boundless potential of our united community. Please be sure to share this video, you know, share your thoughts in the comments and join us next time as we continue to uncover and celebrate our rich heritage. Visit KhalifaMedia.com for more insights, discussions, and revelations. Together, let's embrace our past to shape our future. Until next time, keep seeking, keep questioning, and above all, keep embracing your true identity. Thank you for watching and remember, your identity is your legacy. Islam, peace, and bye-bye.